We ready Ricky? Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. I apologize for being late this morning. We had a vehicle breakdown, so I had to run to Jacksonville unexpectedly before I came in here. I don't have, there this, so I wanted to welcome everybody to the, the Town and North Topsail Beach Regular Board of Aldermen Meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 6th. If I could ask everybody to please put their phones on silent and we will call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Mayor Protam Leonard to do the invocation.
Okay. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this town and keep it a beautiful and friendly place to live. We pray for your guidance to enable this board to work together in unity to make fair and informed decisions today. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, and members of our armed services here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. Further ask you keep an especially watchful eye over our forward deployed service members who are serving in harm's way, as so many of them at various times have called North Topsail Beach their home. Finally, we pray that our town be spared the ravages of hurricanes and other natural disasters and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. And we especially ask that you keep a watchful eye over Connie and her family. We ask this in his name. Amen.
And a pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the next item is the approval of the agenda. And I know that we did need to amend the consent agenda. And that was, I can't remember which that was for though.
Yes, this is to include under the consent agenda, if you will, specifically the LGC contract that are distributed to the board earlier in the week. This is for our audit. We went through the RFP process and the board approved a ward to AAPG LLC at the June 4th meeting to complete our audit. I'll need the LGC contract approved because of the not exceed amount of forty-one thousand. The attorneys and I have both reviewed that contract and Attorney Ferguson has had meetings with the auditing firm. We're ready to start next week, so I would ask that the board approve this contract so we can get started.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Darian. So that will be in consent under M. We'll add it as M. Is there any other comments or changes to the agenda? Anybody want to make a motion?
The only thing that I, and Alderman Grant, I had texted you when I was in the passenger seat, not the driver's seat, coming this morning. But I have not had a chance to see your slide presentation that you wanted to do today. So I don't know if the, anybody else on the board feels this way, but I mean, I think it's just common courtesy to be able to review them before they are presented to the general public. So I, I would like to make a motion to hold those till the September meeting because I haven't seen them.
I don't think that's the protocol, Mayor. I think that we've had presentations by their people. We've put testimony up here that we didn't see beforehand. We've done all kinds of things like that. I, I have, I have a real problem with that. I think that's, it's not a good idea and a way to go forward.
Okay, well, and I'm just asking.
I'm okay.
You're fine?
Yeah.
All right, Alderman Benson?
It's unfortunate that we get presentations that we don't have a chance to review ahead of time. But I say we go ahead.
Okay, Mayor Protam.
It's the second month in a row this has happened by the same Alderman. I'm starting to just feel like it might be a little bit along the lines of campaigning. That's what, not what these meetings are for.
So Tom, that was a, you would like to wait?
No, I think it's fine. I just wanted to express my opinion about it.
Okay, all right, then let's go. Any other discussion or requested changes to the agenda? Yes?
I wanted to see if we could have Police Chief report out during the regular business meeting rather than in the consent.
So you would like to pull the Police Chief's report out and put it under, Alice, would that be under, no?
Continuing.
Continuing, I would assume. Okay, so that, is everybody okay with that? All right, so that'll be B, under continuing business?
Just, just to go over this past month's stats. Yeah.
There's going to be a test, Bill.
No, just to go over this past month's stats since it's summer and there's more work always being done. Thank you.
And you only want to, there's more work done from the fire department too though, so you just want to hear from?
If we could hear both, that'd be great.
Is that right? Is Chad here? Yeah, he's here.
Okay. I mean, it's our busy time. I'd like to hear what these guys have been up to.
Okay. Okay, so I added those as B and C under continuing business. All right, so then let's just make a motion to approve the agenda with those noted changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Actually, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. First, I would, before I get into my report, I would just like to do some welcomes and introductions this morning. I'd like to welcome and introduce everyone to our new town clerk, sitting to the left of me, Alexis Stanfield. She's come on board since our July meeting. Alexis is a North Carolina Certified County Clerk and recently serving as the clerk to the Board for Pender County. Also, I would like to welcome Mr. Christopher Huckabee, who's in the back there. Welcome, Christopher. He is our new Public Works Supervisor. He's recently come on board as well since the July meeting. He is retired from the Marine Corps. Thank you for your service. And with twenty years of experience in facilities management and logistics. So, so welcome. Glad to have you on board. We're looking forward to all the great work that's ahead of us. Also, we were recently advertised, as I'm sure you have seen, for the Planner One position that was budgeted and I expect this position will be filled soon as well. Beach projects and operations. Potential tropical cyclone number eight, which we refer to usually as PTC number eight. Work continues to be on pause for the season effective May 2nd. Once turtle season is over, we will pick back up with that emergency dune, dune project. The project remains at the CRC level with FEMA at this time. The Karen Beasley Sea Turtle Rescue and Rehabilitation Center, we've been coordinating a sea turtle release. If you've seen on our board when you came in this morning, we have a sea turtle release that's planned for tomorrow, Thursday, at 10:00 a.m. This will be held at the Jeffries Parking Lot off of New River Inlet Road. This is usually a very highly attended event, so I would encourage anyone to carpool if that's at all possible. There is some available parking here at Town Hall that you can park and walk to as well. And parking will be free, so there will not be any ticketing going on during this event. The Topsail Island VITEX eradication project, this is initiative I've been reporting on over the past several months. I've been coordinating with the other towns to kick off the project. Included on today's consent agenda, you'll see, to authorize the funds for up to two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-two-hundred dollars. This is the amount that was included in the fiscal year budget. This is so we can officially get started. Per the inter-local agreement, the Town of Topsail Beach serves as the fiscal agent for the project. The commitment to complete the project is expected to be four years in, in duration. The coastal storm damage mitigate, the coastal storm damage mitigation grant will help fund the project for the first two years of this engagement. But the way that we worded the inter-local agreement, it does not obligate any of the towns to participate in the project beyond the initial grant. The total grant award amount was six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, sixty dollars and fifty cents and again is a fifty percent match on the local governments. I've worked this week with Onwasa to coordinate for water for any areas where they need it. We are coordinating a temporary parking pass they will use while performing treatments that'll serve for island-wide, so across all, all three towns, Surf City, Topsail Beach, and North Topsail Beach. We also order temporary signs that will be displayed around some of the treatment areas that have a QR, QR code as well that gives you information on the project. It'll even take you to, for property owners who have not signed waivers for the permission forms. It'll take you right to that spot where you can do that online as we go forward. The sign is also in our lobby if you saw it coming in today. We are looking to have crews on site beginning treatments either August 13th through the 16th or August 18th through the 21st. We're still working through that to solidify that date with the contractor. Crews will be traveling in vehicles marked with Michael Baker International, who is the contractor that will be doing the treatments. The only properties that will be treated are properties that have signed and returned the property permission forms that I just spoke about. And I do encourage any property owner that has VITEX on their property to, even if you haven't already signed up, to please go on our website or hit that QR code that'll take you to that link. You can do it electronically, or if you want a paper form, I'm happy to mail you a paper form to fill out. But please do that so that we have that and we can proceed accordingly as we continue to plan through the project and additional phases. Beach access matting. We will be installing that at the Jeffries Beach Access by the end of this month. Beach Inlet Sound Advisory Committee, the August 19th meeting for the Beach Inlet Sound Advisory Committee has been canceled. In the meantime, Mr. Chris Gibson, engineer, has reported on permit status this week. He reported they're currently working through an easement agreement with North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission. His initial research from Onslow County Register of Deeds indicated that DA 143 was owned directly by the State of North Carolina Property Control Section. Typically, the use of state lands within the Corps Ement is granted directly through the part, permit process. After the one-stop meeting that Chris reported on previously, North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission is claiming title to the land. So they are working through them to get an easement to use the site before moving ahead with the permit application. So there'll be more to come on that, I'm sure, at the next meeting, which will be reported by the Bicep Chair, Mr. Struthers. But we did want to get you that important update since we just got it this week.
I'll go, if it's all right, and I'll go around. So I wanted to encourage anybody who has questions about VITEX to please feel free to email Ms. Darian. And Alderman Benson has answered a few folks directly as well. He's very educated on what that is and just loves to talk about it. So if you do have questions about what it is or, you know, why we feel the need to do this project, please don't hesitate to let us know. And I wanted to say congratulations on the beach matting. I know you've been working on that for probably what feels like forever.
Yes, and I'm excited to see that. I think that'll be a, a nice thing for all the visitors.
Okay.
Alice, just for the public, do we have an idea of what the beach matting expense, like the cost was for that project?
That was, I'm thinking back, it was in the ten thousand range.
Okay, all right.
And it'll be two mats, both at Jeffries location. And this is really a test site because we've got, it's a good opportunity because it's a straight walkout area. So if it proves to be successful at this area, I envision that, you know, my, my discussions to the board around budget time will be to encourage us to potentially evolve with that and go down to another access off of New River Road that has a flat access and look at any other ones.
And so that was town funds or did we have grant money?
That was town funds.
Okay, thank you.
But there, that will significantly assist people with mobility issues in getting onto the beach. We were just down in Myrtle Beach last week. They had it there as well. I've seen it in Hilton Head and it does really help to make that transition. Yes, sir?
Yeah, just a quick, when I wanted to follow up on the Onwasa comment, I'll hit that in my comments, you know, the issues we've had down in Ocean City on that.
Yes.
So I'll be including that and I think working and getting the permit, permits for them is going to make a big difference because there's a lot of work that's going to have to go on in the town.
Any other questions for Town Manager? Thank you, Alice. Okay, do we have anybody signed up for the first open forum?
Yes, Mayor. On the list, we have Kip Malcolm.
Okay. And your address, Kip?
Certainly, 3102 Green Street.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen and town staff. I'd like to begin by thanking you for your ongoing commitment to our community. As the Vice President of the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council. As the Vice President of the Ocean City Beach Citizens Council and resident, I want to sincerely thank the town for its incredible support of the Ocean City Jazz Festival over the Fourth of July weekend. This event is always more than just a great music event. It's a celebration of culture, history, and community. This year, the event welcomed over 1,200 attendees. And for the second time, the festival was broadcast globally by WNCU Radio. It was featured in the June Magazine, June issue of our state magazine, and covered by the North Carolina Weekend on PBS. None of this would be possible without the behind-the-scenes efforts of the town staff and leadership. From permitting to public safety, IT, logistics, your collaboration once again helped make the festival a true success. I also want to thank the board for recognizing the service of our zoning board of adjustment members, whose terms have recently ended. Scott Morris served nearly eight years, and Chair Hannah McLeod dedicated more than 13 years. These volunteers take on complex, often quiet responsibilities that directly shape our town's growth and character. It's meaningful to see their contributions honored with certificates of appreciation today. With that, I would encourage more of our residents and neighbors, both full-time and part-time, to get and stay involved in our incredible community that we call home and we care so deeply about. Whether your passion is environmental preservation, public safety, town planning, or simply enhancing the quality of life in North Topsail Beach, your voice and participation truly matter. There are many ways to contribute. Consider serving on a board or committee or help out at any number of our community events. And to our neighbors like me who walk the beach in the mornings, picking up litter as we go along, please keep it up. And while you're out there, if you come across any deep holes left behind by vacationers who may not realize the risks they pose, go ahead and fill them. Every act of care helps protect our beaches and makes a difference. Looking ahead to the November 4th municipal election, I encourage the board, community organizations, and local media to support and help facilitate public candidate debates or forums. While the Greater Topsail Chamber of Commerce is hosting a candidate night here on October 7th, it's a great opportunity for voters to hear directly from those of us running for office. But we can and should do more to engage our electorate. Open dialogue and accessibility forums benefit everyone in North Topsail Beach. Once again, thank you for your continued support and service to our town, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you, Kip. Is there anybody else?
Next up, we have Jeff Meyer.
Okay.
Good morning. 2224 New River Inlet Road, number, Unit 138. I just want to know what involvement the town has or is doing with regards to the dispute of crossovers through Topsail Reef. I hear what our board tells us, our HOA board tells us, but I'd like to know what involvement the town has and their opinions of allowing this to happen to a private community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Jeff Zanner.
Jeff, if you could start with your address.
1243 New River Inlet Road. I want to thank the mayor, Alderman, and town and audience for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to introduce myself. Many of you don't know me. I've been here as a resident since 2020, but I've had a home here since 2013. I've taken part in a lot of, right now, watching some turtle nests tonight, so I'm on the roll for that. But I did want to express my gratitude to the board and the town for making this a place that we've been coming as a family since 2010. And we purchased a home in 2013 here, and we've built a home since in 2020. And so we love it here. We're staying here. My wife and I enjoy this town a lot. I've got two daughters, and one's just graduated college, environmental science, and the other's still at UNC Chapel Hill in environmental science as well. I'm not sure how that happened. But I know I've got a lot on my hands with that. But, and so I've seen, I've been in the, in the audience watching for many years, and I think it's time to, to see what I can contribute to the town. So I'm announcing that I'm running for one of the Alderman seats. So just put it straight out there. Kip, that was a nice introduction by you. I didn't come prepared. I'm just winging this because this is really just an introduction. So I'm Jeff Zanner. Please reach out to me if you have any questions. I'd love to get a chance to talk to everybody and listen to what's going on. I kind of know some of the things that are happening here. I'm in tune to what's going on. But I think we have a lot of the same goals, which I think we might hear about today that were alluded to. And I think we can push them over the finish line. I think we need to think about aligning goals and working together. I think there's some cooperation here, but I also think that the town, I think we need to think about things like market research. My background is in the lottery business. Before that, I was a physician. Don't ask how that works. And we do market research. And it's very important to figure out how you're going to push certain things over a finish line and how you're going to get there. The relationship building with other communities nearby, also with your county, also with the state. I lived in DC for a number of years, and I've seen how that works. And that can be messy, but it's also important to understand how it works. So thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to introduce myself, so when you see me, don't be afraid to come up, ask questions. I might not have any answers, but I'm all ears.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
If Connie was here, she would thank you for being on the Turtle Watch. Yes, I just wondered if anybody else signed up before?
Yes, Larry Strother.
Okay, there you go.
I'm Larry Strother. I live at 308 Lanterna Lane in North Topsail Beach, and I'm running too. So I just want to say thank you for what you do. I didn't know that we were going to have a slugfest, but I'm in. I'm on the ballot, so thank y'all for your vote.
Thanks, Larry. Is anybody else signed up?
Those are all the signups.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? No? Okay, we have no public presentation and hearings. So the next item is the consent agenda. I'm going to ask for approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, actually, we're pulling out.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess at this point, is there any questions prior to pulling out? No, that's continuing business, so we're good. So it's approval on the consent agenda minus the Police and Fire Department as modified, yeah.
And we added the LGC contract as N?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go. Continuing business. So the first, I don't see Hannah here or Scott.
Planning Director Ms. Hill is here to accept the certificates on their behalf.
All right. Ms. Hill, can you come up? I'm going to hand you those.
So we've got two certificate of appreciation, one for Mr. Cloud and one for Scott, and they both say for their dedicated services, selfless devotion, all their time to the town, serving on the Board of Adjustments, Hannah since May of 2012, and Scott since November of 2017.
I just want to say, I just want to say really quickly. I just want to say really quickly, on both of their behalfs, they regret that they could not attend today. And as all of you may know, that the work that comes from the planning department, whether it's work that comes through the planning board and goes to the Board of Aldermen or that it goes to the Board of Adjustment, simply could not exist without the committed citizens like Ms. Hannah McLeod and Mr. Scott Morris and the other planning board, Board of Adjustment members that we have. And these are, you know, dedicated citizens that care about their community, and this is how they've chosen to serve. And from the bottom of my heart, as a planner and as your planning director, I sincerely appreciate working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item would be for our police chief to come up and tell us how busy y'all were last month.
It's really the month before last, which we're going to ask about. Well, things always pick up in the summer, but you get our reports and you can see where accidents have gone up, some assaults in this next month's report. Of course, this is June, so the next one you'll see is July. We generally pick up with some breaking and entering, domestics, that type of thing. If you ever have a specific question about when you see under harassment or something like that, I can look up, I can look up the particular report and give you all some additional information on it.
Could you pull the report up?
Yeah. Ricky, do you have it?
I will say, Chief, I don't know if you heard that or not, but at my vacant house, one of our rentals, our cleaning lady crew showed up at 11 o'clock at night, and I didn't know they were coming. So I called the police.
Oh, yeah.
And they were there in about five minutes.
We get there pretty quick.
So you need to add cleaning lady to one of your items up there.
And we try to put out to the town also, if you're going to call, don't call a police number even during the day. Call our dispatch number, which is the non-emergency number.
Can you go ahead and give that to the public again?
It's 910-455-9119.
And so year over year, are you seeing an increase, like, June to June?
We generally do. Our calls and even listening to the county calls this year have been down a little bit, I think. We've had a lot of people here, but not a lot of bad activity. We've had a couple of fights in the parking lots and domestic disturbances. If you look under arrest, they'll see assault by pointing a gun, things like that. That was a domestic parole, domestic in a vehicle, littering, trespassing. We get a lot of trespassing calls.
And the security checks, do we ever charge for those?
We do not. What we do, we make a, we make a list of all the businesses.
Okay.
And that, if there's eight businesses in one building, we count all those separate, but we make sure we shake all those doors. So each night, every officer is required to make so many of those during the day, but mostly at night.
But with the false alarms, are we charging at all if they're repetitive false alarms?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
One quick question. So this is, this is the June report in the August meeting. Is there a way to get closer to where we're getting the previous month? I mean, is there some sort of a lag time on the reporting? Could we have not had the July report in the August packet versus the June?
I believe we can do that because right now we got it on the RMS system and CAD system, so we can print it out. I'll make a note.
That'd be great if you could. I'd appreciate it.
To have some update. It may not get out to you as fast, but I'll get it out, and we'll have it here.
Well, I think that's also going to depend, Mayor Protem, based on what day is the first Wednesday of the month and when the agenda goes out.
Yeah, you know, I'm not criticizing by any means. All I'm saying is if we could get, if it's a possibility to do, we do, that would be great.
Because we get the agenda items to the clerk earlier than that.
Right.
So we may, I can give it to the town manager. She can put that out as additional report to you or an update.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, fire chief.
Go ahead.
Wasn't even going to ask this, but how many are off-island?
How many are off-island? Well, I can't give you that from this report.
But it's not zero, right?
No, absolutely not. Like, Saturday night, I know we went twice, you know, so I mean, it just, you know, I can't give you the exact, I can give you the exact number, it's not right here.
I just know at the county meetings, they're talking about the issues relating to the volunteer fire departments and the staffing and the building and all that kind of stuff. So I assume we're helping out Turkey Creek.
Oh, absolutely. Turkey Creek, Holly Ridge.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the thing that you can't tell from this report would be how many EMS calls you're making. Are there still significantly?
So it's the 47% up there.
Are EMS?
That's EMS calls, yes, ma'am. Now, speaking Turkey Creek, they come to us as much because we're Mutual Aid for Water Rescues and all that stuff, so I don't want to sound like we're just going to them. I mean, they come to us as well.
It was just more about, there's a lot of concern at the county level on staffing, on running, going into those and all those types of things, and so.
Absolutely. Okay.
So I had a question on, were any of the fires related to people grilling on decks?
Occasionally.
Yeah. Because I am seeing that, no, I'm seeing that more, you know, as I'm driving by with like a grill, like with flames on the third floor deck and stuff. So I don't know how we could do a public campaign, but what are our rules around grilling and having open flames under buildings or on decks?
So if it's a single-family resident, I have no authority over that, which is majority of our, you know, homes are single families. So now your duplexes and stuff like that, we go ask them to extinguish it, and then we move it out and we educate them on 10-foot away from any combustible structure, stuff like that. So we do a whole educational part while we are there.
Okay, all right. That, I wanted that 10-foot number again out there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing I asked the chief about before the meeting was water rescues this year? And what did you tell me about the number of water rescues?
Well, you asked if they were down, and as of right now, they are, but we just solved that problem by talking about it.
Knock on that wood, Rick.
But, yeah, but you know.
We're having a safe summer so far.
The storms are getting active, which is going to cause our water to be, have more undercurrent and stuff like that. And that's really when we start to have more water rescues versus non-water rescues, so.
I think Rick was nice. Did you have a hand up?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman Grant member.
Just real quick as a heads up, it came out of the county meeting. It was either Royce or Tim that said they have the drone that drops life preservers and stuff. Is, I'm just giving you a heads up. It's the first time I heard that they actually, it's in their budget and they're going forward. I'm assuming you're aware of that?
No, sir.
You might want to, you and the chief might want to, chief maybe where?
It's, it's faster.
And what I was telling, when Royce grabbed me afterwards, he said, "By the way, we may be dropping life preservers." I think you need to talk to our police.
Yeah, Australia's been using that for years, and they're more rural areas, you know. For us, it's faster for us to get in the water than it is to take time getting the drone out, getting it up and going. So that's, but yeah, absolutely. It's another tool in the toolbox, right?
From a public safety and public health standpoint, part of the Outer Banks has had bacterial outbreaks in their water, and they're now posting, you know, warnings about swimming in areas. Do we work with the Health Department, or have we ever done that?
Occasionally, winters, when it's warranted, the state will contact us. And when we are contacted, we'll put a public notice out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so now we're on to new business. So this is Alderman Grant. So your first item is hosting of debates.
This is just to get, to get this before the citizens and everybody else. This is not something that I'm asking for any kind of decision on today. Next slide. When I did the research on this, I was a little bit confused about what we're allowed to do. And so I tend to go to the UNC School of Government. And if you look at the second paragraph, it said, "May a city or county sponsor a candidate forum?" Yes, as long as the purpose, okay, is to provide, it means, although such a forum may well have an effect on the election, Yes, as long as the purpose, okay, is to provide, it means, although such a forum may well have an effect on the election. If the sponsor treats all candidates equally and does not support, it does not violate the statute. So when I saw that, I thought we ought to have a discussion about that at the board level and input from the town people about what to do. Second slide, or next slide, I'm sorry. And so just, my recommendation is that we do a minimum of two debates. One in September, one in October. This is not a shot at the Chamber of Commerce type of thing, but my experience with that has been because it's a very short timeframe and so many candidates, it really doesn't give you all the exposure that you need, especially because, well, it's, I'd like to be livestreamed, which I think they are doing, correct?
No.
They're not?
The chamber is not live streaming.
But I think that would be helpful because we appreciate everybody coming today, but I think it would be helpful for people to see that. And also because we just saw three new people today come up that are running for office. It's a chance for them to get exposure that probably in one, one of them was not gonna work. I think it'll, and again, this is just, you know, this is debates one oh one, which is highlight the fundamental differences. And then at the September board meeting, have a discussion after getting feedback from the town attorney as to what we're allowed to do and not do, to decide how many debates we want to have and some idea of when they might be. So not asking for a decision, I just want to put it out there so that in September, we can have a discussion since we're getting so close to the election. That's all I have.
So I would just like to add to that real quick, Rick, and I've talked with you about this before, is I think debates are a great idea, but I also want the candidates that are here and those that are running also know this already because you've already run in previous elections. Don't just wait for those. Like you need to be out meeting the public, you know, potentially hosting some at some of our local businesses. Wherever you want to do to entice people to come and talk with you, do not wait for these because, you know, I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you need to take it on yourself as well.
Absolutely. Okay.
Sure.
That's all I have. I'm sorry, go ahead. And the other thing too is, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. If you want to volunteer to help in these debates, anybody out there, including the people here, we have to figure out how we're gonna moderate this stuff, how we're gonna do all that kind of stuff. So anybody that wants to volunteer on something like that, please let us know.
And it's not the town staff. I just want to be clear too, it's not, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about people, well, not the people in the last row that are town staff, the people who are here.
See, that's one of the reasons why it's always been good. In the past, the chamber has picked this up and they moderate it. And prior to that, years ago, legal women voters did it, and it's totally outside, it's, other than the use of the room, the town has no involvement and it keeps it all above board. I know years ago, in fact, when Connie was a reporter for the Daily News, she used to come in and moderate, moderate the debates when the league was doing them, but just a thought.
Could I just add one thing? I think that that council needs to give us advice on that because that's not the way I read this. That the town is allowed to host it and perhaps even have people there, but I think I would ask the, our council to advise us in September what exactly, because I know there was a lot of confusion in the last election about what was allowed.
Just because, just because the town can, doesn't mean the town has to, especially if there's external agencies and organizations that are willing to do it. And you're right, because you were here at the last one, it was on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Happen to remember that because it was my birthday, and I'm fairly certain you participated in the one that we had back in twenty twenty-one. So, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of a little bit uncomfortable with the town getting involved in something that it doesn't have to get involved with because there are external agencies willing to take care of it for us. Just my opinion.
Okay, and it sounds like we're gonna have more discussion with the attorney and he's gonna come back with a recommendation, Alderman?
So I'm totally in favor of debates. I think they're a great idea. I may be the only alderman here that has a master's level certification in mediation from the Anderson School of Business at the University of New Mexico. So I would be happy to moderate a debate and so we can ask legal whether that would be allowed if we don't have someone else volunteer. But if we can get someone from another agency, that's great. If we can't, I'm happy to volunteer.
Just for general information, and we'll be prepared to report more on this in September so you can make an informed decision. I do not think there is anything inappropriate of the town sponsoring a debate or hosting a debate. I think there are some logistical issues that you all have already identified where it comes down to who's gonna moderate it. We don't need town staff. I don't, I would need to look in further if a sitting alderman could. I think as an extension of the town, I kind of have some concerns. I just need to look into that. And then the issue becomes expending services, meaning town staff time to host that. I also have some concerns that just need to be looked into, and so we'll be prepared. But, you know, so generally, I agree, you can host one, but I need to look through the legality of the logistics of how that's gonna work.
So is that something we can also, you could touch base with the Board of Elections to see how other places are doing these?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I really don't see the point of the town getting involved in sponsoring debates. We've got the chamber that's volunteered to do it this time. Susie Meyer did it for us and Jeff Meyer did it for us one year at their place. So I think that what's already on the schedule is more than adequate, although I'll debate anytime, anywhere.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next agenda item, which is approval level and financial controls?
At the last Board of Aldermen meetings, and I know you all were not here, after we came out of closed session, I raised an issue, and this is not, all I'm gonna do is lay out what I thought the discussion should have been after that. We made a decision in closed session with regard to payments to the accounting firm. So if you look at this, the action was taken in closed session. Town manager was to pay them in what I believe is inconsistent with the contract terms. Remembering that through May thirty-first, we have already paid this accounting firm $238,000. At the end of that meeting, I mentioned that I thought that that decision should be made in open forum, not that. Next slide. The contract, I know because I wrote the language, provided, and at the March fifth board meeting, it says there was a new number six presented by Attorney Payson, that they agreed they will not bill the town in excess of eight hours per day, per individual, without prior written approval of the town manager. They have billed us as much as fifteen hours in a day since that contract was entered into. They've resulted in thousands of dollars of bills for that overage. In a closed session, consensus directed that we pay it, and after that, I raised the issue. Next slide. So why is, you know, hang on a second, let me just listen out here. The concern that I had, you know, backtrack a little bit, is I think just a little bit of history that I think you're aware of. When we started with GWI, it was for $20,000 for five months to basically do the accounting work for the town. That morphed into a contract for $298,000 that we, we raised it from 20,000 to 98. And as a result, with that kind of money, and I guess I'm known as the numbers guy, I started looking at the billing and stuff. And I had concerns about anytime, in my opinion, you're dealing with a contractor that bills by the hour, that you gotta be paying attention to what the bills look like. And my concern was, if you look at this slide, after the contract was adopted, okay, this is one individual, this is not about the competence of the person or not, is that after we did the eight-hour contract, on April second, they billed twelve hours and worked until 2:00 a.m. On the third, they worked thirteen hours and worked till 11:00 p.m. On the fourth, they worked fifteen hours, worked till 2:00 a.m. On the eighth, eleven and a half to one. Forty total overbill was almost $3,000. That's why I was opposed to paying them. If you come to cut my, if I pay you to cut my grass once a month and you cut it five times, I'm only gonna pay you for one time. I don't believe this is a good use of town money. I believe that we're stewards of this. Next slide, please. This was a consensus decision and it was done in closed session. I believe on decisions like this, we've already had a number of issues raised about the amount of money that we're spending with the accounting firm. And in February, you remember, one of the individuals here raised the issue about the appearance of impropriety in holding closed-session discussions without letting the public know the discussions. And actually, the same individual had a problem with the GWI contract. We're spending thousands of dollars, it's okay for us to disagree as a board as to how those things happen. In my opinion, it's not okay to do that, not in front of you, so that you know how we're voting. And generally, and you'll see in today's thing, we had three change orders. If we had done a change order for this, whatever, but under the terms of the contract, I don't think, I think we ought to spend the money like it's your money and not spend it going away. The vote on there was Benson, Leonard, Plittle voted to pay and Grant and Laura voted not to pay. And so since I was not allowed to debate this after the last meeting, I wanted to get this out there because I'm very concerned about the amount of money that we're spending on this contract, and I think that we need to make sure that whatever they do is consistent with the contract. That's all I had on this one.
Okay, and then the next item?
I have a response.
Sure.
This is from the Board of Aldermen Minutes, July second, two twenty-five, that we just approved in the consent agenda. Mayor McDermott announced the board discussed the contract with GWI while in closed session. The board agreed to three amendments in the contract. The first amendment is that the vendor works eight hours per day, but does not exceed forty hours per week unless approved by the town manager in writing. The second amendment is the language for the town in North Tops La Beach where to hire a GWI employee. The board agreed to amend the language from compensation to salary and add a ninety-day timeline. The third amendment pertained to travel. The board agreed to strike hotel and travel from the contract. The motion was made by Alderman Plittle, made a motion to approve the contract amendments. Mayor Protem seconded the motion. Alderman, Benson, Grant and Mayor Protem limited, voted in favor. Alderman Woszewski voted in opposition. Motion carried four to one. So we voted on the contract, we approved the contract as a board. I don't understand your concern.
Okay, can I address that very quickly? Just so everybody understands, that language is already in the contract. The language that he's talking about, because we had got into such a discussion about not billing more than those eight hours, okay? That's why we reinforced with them the same contract language that existed. The contract language on eight hours a day existed in March of this year, right? In March of this year, and we were billed in April under that contract for more than eight hours a day for four consecutive days. That's $3,000 that the town did not have to spend under that contract.
As aldermen, we are the fiduciaries and we need to care about how the town spends money. And I did go on record voting not to approve this contract during that session. We did approve changes to the wording of the contract to try to tighten up the controls around the contract. I'm very much looking forward to us getting hires made so that we can get a Director of Finance so that then we can let this contract terminate and the board can take action to terminate it once we get our accounting department built back up. Alice, do we have any update on the Director of Finance position?
Applications are still being received and reviewed and we're interviewing as they come in.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We had to go outside and hire an outside contractor to help with our financial issues. Everybody understands that. We also understand that there are folks in this organization that work from home, so they're not coming in at eight o'clock, punch o'clock, going to lunch at twelve, one, coming back and work till five. People work sometimes longer hours than they should when they're working from home, but they get in the middle of an issue, they get in the middle of a project, they don't want to stop. I think anybody that's worked from home would understand that. What I find particularly troubling about the timing of this issue, and it's coming up and being presented here with slides that none of the board members had the option to review prior to the meeting, is the timing in front of November's general election, and I'll just leave it there. It's campaigning, plain and simple.
Go ahead, Laura.
I have one more comment around this contract. One of my concerns around them working off hours is we need our department heads to be available to them and for the accounting firm to be available to the department heads. So tightening this up so that they're working more in hours aligned with our staff then gives our staff the ability to work with them. And also, since the accounting firm has made remarks regarding our staff that have not always been positive, I think them working the same hours of staff to try to build a better team approach to correcting these issues that we're finding is better time spent than them working a lot of time off hours. So I'm glad we tightened up that wording and I'm glad that the town manager now has to approve any hours over the eight hours. So I think we have made some strides in tightening up the contract.
I'm not gonna debate this because this relates to the people out here and not the people up here. All the information I presented was available to everybody on this board. Their bills, their summaries, everything else. I tried to raise this issue before any nomination, anybody decided to run for election. I did it last month, all right? And I was not given the opportunity to present any of this information, and all I'm saying is that from the sake of transparency, doesn't really matter, you know, whether they work late or whatever, but if they don't follow the contract, just like the contractors that we have for everything else, they have to follow the contract. Otherwise, we're not being stewards of our money.
You know, Alderman Grant is concerned about the amount of money that we've had to spend on this outside firm. And I agree, it's excessive. But we also found out by hiring a company with the experience necessary that we've got $2 million in the FEMA portal that we didn't know about. So that $2 million, to me, outweighs the fact that we had to hire an expensive finance firm, found this money for us, overshadows the fact that, yeah, they're expensive, but sometimes when you pay top dollar, you get top results.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, just.
This is the last, but this is the last comment, okay?
I love that because we all have a summary of the work that they've done. Any financial person would have looked at the FEMA stuff and found that money. The FEMA work for GWI is about six percent of the $250,000 that they've billed. That's it. There's a summary that we all have, and so, and that includes DEQ and FEMA.
Okay, can we move on to the next item, please?
Madam Mayor, if I may, briefly.
Go ahead.
And I was not asked a question, so I apologize if I'm going off, but I do want to make sure the minutes and the record accurately reflects, based on the presentation, that going into closed session, the attorney-client privilege to seek advice about strategy is a statutorily prescribed manner to go into closed session, which is what I believe you have gone into closed session over. When you're in closed session, you may not take a vote, and so it was characterized that there was a vote. I don't believe that is the case. I think there, under the attorney-client privilege, you are allowed to go through consensus. And so I just want to make it clear that, you know, there might be a colloquial term for vote when what happened is, was consensus for legal strategy and direction. I do not believe that there were any actions taken that in closed session that required a open, public meeting vote. Now, obviously, this is, this conversation is within your purview and is about policy discussions as you should be having them, but I just want to make sure that the minutes and record accurately reflect that the term vote here. and record accurately reflect that the term "vote" here is not the legal term of a vote as to that.
And that's not, that was not the intention, but it was done by consent.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Then we're going to move on to goals and reporting. Alderman Grant?
Yep. This is a follow-up and a discussion, and I'm a little bit sorry that Connie's not here because she was not part of this discussion, but this will segue into the goals conversation a bit later. Go ahead. All right. So, at the GWI presentation, and you can see with the video, we talked about cleaning up the financials, correcting work, doing those type of things. And we've spent about $20,000 correcting work. Keep going. I want to talk about financial controls because I think as we talk about going forward, putting together a plan and doing those type of things, it's important in any business to have financial controls in place to make sure that we're spending them in the correct way. All right? And basically, controls have nothing to do with the staff. The example I would use, you go to the bank, you put the money in the bank, you trust the bank, but you also know they've got rules, procedures, policies to make sure that your money's protected. That's all we're talking about here, is putting in a structure to make sure that happens. That's just a basic business practice that I've lived with for the 30 years that I've been running businesses. Keep going. So, one of the issues that we have is that we've had two straight audits that found deficiencies in internal controls. All right? Monies were spent that had not been obligated and appropriated. Just for the record, there was nothing, there was no stealing, there was nothing else. This is about documenting things, making sure they're done the right way. Go ahead.
So, Rick, but just back to that point, I believe what you're saying, what the audit found, from my memory, and I am getting old, so maybe I'm off...
It's right there.
But it's from one fund to another.
Right. There's no, but again, what this...
It was revolving around the ARPA funds specifically with a journal entry.
Right.
And that specific finding, actually, if you go back through the records, goes back to, you've had this off and on since 2014.
Bingo. And again, that's cleaning up other stuff. Go ahead, the next page. Same way in 24. The whole point of this thing is not that money's been misappropriated or anything else. What I'm highlighting to you is that we, as a town, have an obligation to make sure that the proper controls are in place, to make sure that we're safeguarding... I'm sorry, is somebody talking?
I don't know. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard somebody talking. But basically, all you're, all we're trying to do is, I'm talking about putting a system in place to make sure that's documented. All right? Go ahead. We had a board discussion about this, and that board discussion was about approval levels for the town manager. All right? This has nothing to do with the performance of the town manager. This has to do with just having documented controls for how we're going forward. And if you look at this thing, some people wanted to raise the thing, other people didn't. The whole point to this thing is, is that we need to make sure going forward, particularly with the money that we're going to be spending over the next years, that we have the proper documentation to protect your money. All right? And I love Deborah Mack's comment in the last one. "A practice which is not specifically documented does not create a financial control and, in fact, creates the opposite." And that's the lady that's been doing our work. What I'm talking about is, as we go forward, making sure we have those controls in place. And again, in this world, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. The last thing you can say to an auditor is, "This is the way we've done it before." That doesn't work. Go ahead. All right. So, the issue is for us to consider, as we're going forward, okay? Because I'm going to be talking about planning in a minute, is that we got two straight audits that identified something. We've, our outside firm, GWI, has identified numerous problems with processes. It's in their bills, everything else we're all privy to. What does approval authority mean? Because I think there's a difference of opinion on that. All right? I think that we're okay right now because I think that, in my opinion, our manager does a very good job of making sure that everything is taken care of that way, but you have to have documented controls in place. And then the last one is, and I'll talk, that's the next issue we're going to talk about, is a strategic plan cannot be effective without proper financial controls. Go ahead. And that's the audit language. And all this is, is just making sure that we, as a board, understand that we have to have these documentations in place. So, it's more just about, because it just seemed there was a lot of confusion, and you and I talked about it, Mayor.
Well, and it seems like, I mean, you recapped, but the audits are also presented at these board meetings for the general public and everybody as well.
No, it's not about that. What a discussion that we had was, in my opinion, not, not the right discussion. When we're talking about controls we have for the town, it's, they have nothing to do, they're a tool for the staff, they are not a reflection of the, of the staff. And to bring in discussions about, you know, "We trust this person," those are the things that you don't do when you're putting financial controls in place. And the only point that I was making is, I wanted to make sure that people were clear when I brought this up, that all this was, is to make sure the documentation process is in place, nothing else.
Yes, Laura.
Can I just add something, just to, to help clarify as well? The audit finding that was cited had to do, like I said, about the ARPA funding, in particular with a journal entry that was made. And that was, the issue was, is that it was, it should have been set up as a multi-year grant and it was annually appropriated, so that's where they stated in the financial statements that the finance officer had a finding on that. You know, since with that finding, our response back to the LGC that we provided and the board signed was that we improved our, we updated our purchasing policy at that point, even though that this instance in particular had nothing to do with a purchase, surrounding a purchase, it had to do with a journal entry. Now, going back, I mean, I can go back and look from 2014 on all the issues that were brought forth and, but this in particular had to do with the journal entry and because of that, we, that was the important part of GWI, looking at and with the response and what can we do better, and that was improving the purchasing policies and putting these processes that are in place that were never in place before.
And that is exactly my point, is that you're putting those processes in place that were not there before you got here, correct? And that's all we're saying, is documenting the things that you found and going forward to make sure that it's clear and clean going forward.
Yeah.
That was my whole point.
Yeah. And the expectations are that the process and the policies that the board has, you know, said that we were going to follow, that those are going to be followed.
Perfect.
So, just to let folks know, the audit firm that we used the last two years is not the audit firm that we'll use...
Correct.
...this year.
Yes. We went through, you know, we recommended that the board go out for an RFP this year to go, to solicit proposals from qualified auditors. We received several responses, went through a review process, and at the June Board of Aldermen meeting, the board ultimately gave contract award to AAPG, which is a different firm that has done the previous town audits.
So, I look forward to how they perform for us. Thanks.
Good.
Okay. Next item, goals and reporting for the year.
Uh, next, Rick. So, this, this... One of the things, and I think you all know that I go to all the county meetings, I'm a liaison with the county. And what they have started doing is, they have put together a strategic plan for how they're going to operate for the next five years. And we've talked about it generally, and I think sometimes we've gotten, we've had, you know, as you know, Mayor, so many big projects that, you know, trying to get stuff done, we've got Phase Four, those type of things. But they've got a plan to talk about how, what resources they're going to need. For example, making this up, if we need a new fire truck in four years, let's not wait to start planning for that, let's do it now. What grants are out there, those type of things. And we started down that path before, but it hit home with them. And that was very interesting to me, is I started looking around at some of the neighboring towns. Rick, we don't have a strategic plan. We have a budget, we have things that hold people accountable, and I apologize to Laura because she's been talking about this for a year, about having goals and stuff in place. And if you think about what's happened in this town in the last couple of years, everybody knows their value of their house went up because that's what happened in the revow, but our base amount, our tax base, went up 73%. So, we brought in money for that. We've got more occupancy tax, more sales tax, and we've had an impact, and I think the chiefs would say back there, we've got more people coming in than we used to have, more renters, so go ahead. So, what is a strategic plan? In my simple terms, I think about it this way. If you go on a trip, you want to know where you're going. It's nice to drive, but you better know where you're going. And right now, for us to be able to plan going forward, okay? And if you look at, I've got a copy of Onslow County's plan, which I can, which is here, and believe it or not, this is Holly Ridge's plan they just put together. And we face not the same issues, but we face a lot of issues that we're going to be spending money on going forward. So, go ahead, next slide. So, both these people, and it was funny, I went over and, and I think for those of you who know me, and I got Terry in the back nodding, when I get ahold of something, I want to understand it. When you look at the Serv City Plan, not only do they have a plan, but they've actually got a strategic performance report that they put in there. So, you, the citizens, know what our plan is and how we're going to accomplish it and where we are. Holly Ridge, just another one, they had special meetings and stuff. And so, I think, and we'll get to the end, talking about maybe we ought to set up a planning meeting to be able to address some of those things. Go ahead. So, Onslow County, and this really is what triggered me, because they've had a number of discussions about their planning, and I like some of the quotes. "It helps officials and staff focus on what matters most, use resources wisely, and meet community needs." Okay? And one of the questions that we need to ask as a town of ourself is, how do our goals align with Onslow County? Because there's going to be money available if we can line up our goals with them and with the state. And where can we benefit? Go ahead. Why us? Go ahead. We got needs. I think recently, if you look down, and we talked about road repair, I was down in Ocean City because one of the people in the Unwashes stuff, Alice, was talking how bad the roads, some of the sand on roads there. But if you think about, we've got beach projects, we've got firehouse that's under construction now. I imagine both the chiefs are going to tell us that over the next five years, they might need other things that we need to start planning for. We've done Peters Park work that's been great, road repair, the maintenance building is probably going to have to be looked at. All these things we need to consider, but more than anything else, how do we plan to make sure we got the right money? Go ahead. So, how do we plan? All right. So, this is where, I guess Larry, you and I are out in the string because I think we've promised that the beach plan won't result in increased property taxes. The problem with that is, that's only half the puzzle, because we don't know the other half of that thing. I'm confident the beach plan will be fine with the money going in, but we haven't forecasted the other needs that we've got. One of the things that Holly Ridge Mayor talked about, and I had a, I happened to run into him in a coffee shop, which is what started this conversation, what was very interesting that he talked about was, he had a conversation with Tom Tillis, and Tillis said, you know, "Don't be, don't be impatient, it takes three years to get the money." And so, if it takes us three years to get money for a fire truck, or hire a police car, or whatever, we need to start planning now. And frankly, our history has been, while we've gotten a lot done, we tend not to get the projects done, maybe in a priority way. And a firehouse, to me, is one of those examples. And I think the other one, I don't know why that, my last slide doesn't look like that, but I think the other thing is that it also, we got to get input from you. What's the best use of our money? What's the best strategy? What is it that you want, whether it's a bike path, whether it's beach, whatever? But right now, we need to know the priorities, and then the board sets the priorities because it's not fair to the staff for them not to know what the game plan is. Go ahead. Strategic planning is critical. It can go, this is basically one and one is two. We can't chase every rabbit. We've got to figure out what's important to us, and it's financial and non-financial. Go ahead. I look at this as other people's money. Our beach plan requires that we're going to have to get third-party money coming in to make it work, right, Larry? It won't work that way. What else is out there? While some efforts, like the Cobra stuff, maybe, what's the probability of these things as we're putting together this strategic plan? And what are the needs of our citizens? I think that we should be looking for as much federal money as we can. I'm just trying to get my working notes here, so bear with me just for a second. Bear with me, I'll get there in just a second. I've got too many things in front of me. Okay. Other people's money means we're, we're going to need third-party money. We're going to need federal money, state money, all those type of things. So, next, next one. Assessing, you know, one, one priority, and I want to be transparent on this, this is not, you know, and again, this is a mea culpa. I have spent thousands of hours in Washington, I've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours meeting with senators and congressmen, hundreds and hundreds of hours with staff. And so, I think we need to take a look at kind of where we are. And where this came up is, when I was talking to Mayor Pete, as they call him, they were able to get $1.2 million from Congressman Murphy. Money is easier to get than legislation. That's the reality in Washington. And he was talking to me about how he did it. Go ahead. So, I don't know why that's that, but we're going to talk about Cobra and where we are with Cobra. And I'm sure people want to know about that. Go ahead. So, in '21 and '23, and this is on our website, '21, we introduced a bill, '23, we introduced a bill, '25, we introduced a bill. I was on the website, the House website, this morning, and I'll talk about another website that you can track this on, although we do track it on our website. Tillis filed something in '17, and I was reading an article in the Coastal Review that talked about, "We've been doing this for 30 years." So, I had to educate myself to where we are. Go ahead. The House bill we've got that we did in '23, that's what happened. We didn't, we didn't get the final vote on it, but we thought we were pretty close. Go ahead. What happened in '23? This is what I could never understood, because I thought this was pretty clean-cut. We're going to put more in than we're, than we're taking out, and it should have been an easy type of thing for me. Go ahead. When you go to the committee report, which I've got a copy of if you want, it's not a very good reflection on, on us as a town. And I think that we need to rebut it. And frankly, I, you're going to laugh, but for $9.99, I got a copy of the report that they were relying on in their dissenting opinion. And it talks about things like, they don't like the president, we knew they weren't going to do that. But the things that blew me away in this is, as, and this is their dissenting view in the, in the committee report. "As a result of the natural setting plus poor development managed decisions, the town of North Topsail Beach is the state's most vulnerable barrier island community. It is our view this very narrow, low, and doomless island community is the most hazardous on the U.S. East Coast." Now, I think that's something we have to figure out how to respond to. And it said, "Residents of North Topsail Beach voted to re-nourish the beach rather than abandon or locate it." And then the last comment was, "Removing this area from Cobra would allow taxpayer dollars to pay for the re-nourishment and encouraging other developments within the Cobra to pursue a risky strategy." And I think we learned through BISAC, and Larry, you correct me if you're wrong, there are certain things you can't do in a Cobra area, certain federal money you can't get. Go ahead. The other thing was interesting is, and this was filed in September before it came to the committee, was a guy named William Stiles, who I don't know. He had probably a five or six-page testimony that was filed in this, and he talks about, and I didn't even realize this, I didn't go back this far. I guess, we tried to litigate this, it didn't work, and this has been going on for a while. And the whole idea behind this is to figure out, why haven't, why haven't we been successful? What's the other side saying in this? And basically, what they're talking about is, and I think this is something we need to flesh out, what they're saying is, if we do this, it's going to cost the government a lot more, because you're going to ask us to re-nourish the beaches, everything else. Right or wrong, this is what the opposition says. Next. So, I don't think, we have not, to my knowledge, addressed those issues. I don't like the comments about the town, I would, you know, I wasn't involved in the long-term comments and stuff, but... But what they're hitting us with is, you guys are a small community, you didn't manage your beach, don't ask us to help you. That's their message, and they don't like the president. I thought the issue was, if we took out more than we, or if we took out more than we put in, that the balance would help us. But this is what the opposition to this bill is saying. Go ahead. What did we know? We've been tracking this, it's on the website, we've done a good job. I looked at it again this morning. All this stuff and all these years are going on, and it looks good. Go ahead. The problem is, this is what our view was two years ago. Now, apparently, I kept my mouth shut in this one, because I'm the only one that didn't praise the work from '23, when we didn't get this done. But we thought we were close. The problem is, we don't know what the other side's doing on this. Go ahead. GovTrack, which is a firm, a website that you can get, tracks legislation. Go ahead. They show all activities and forecasts. I don't know if we want to post that on our website, Alice, we can think about it. Go ahead. This is the one that blew me away. They tell us that we've got a 4% chance of passing this bill. All right? That number blew me away. I had no idea that that's how, now, remember, you know, what was that, I forget what the kid's show was, about having a bill go through Congress? But we've got to change that probability. We have got to, we've got to do something to change that probability. Go ahead. Expectations of you all out there are high, but I think, and also, the Senate bill, I looked at it this morning, appreciate them, we sent them a nice letter, it got filed, and there's nothing that's happened. So I believe our probabilities are higher on the House side than that, but they say it's the same action. Keep going. As part of our strategic plan, and look, I am affected directly by this, I'm paying that high insurance for everything, too. We need to, in our planning, decide what the right way to handle this is going forward. All right? Congressman Murphy, you know, in my view, and having spent a lot of time, I think Jeff, you talked about a lot of experience up there, we've got to be talking to Murphy, not his staff. We've got to be talking to, you know, those type of people and see what we can get done. The other thing, too, is Holly Ridge got the million, too, without a lobbyist, because Mayor Pete issued leather. He, you know, he was on the phone to Tillis, he was on the phone to Murphy. His story to me with Murphy is, they were having this conversation, and Murphy said, "How about some money?" And that's how they got a million, too. One of the things we need to figure out is, priority-wise, Cobra's important, but are we trading other money that we could get? Is there other money out there? We could do some of this stuff ourself if we get the money. We've got $61,000 and $300 for the beach lobbyists in our current budget, but shared with two other towns. And as we're always reminded, there's only one pie. And so I was teasing the mayor, and he said, when I got to one, too, I said, "Do you go with anybody else?" He said, "If I took two people with me, I was getting $400,000, not a million, too." We have to look out for ourselves. I think one of the things we need to think about is, going forward, should we hire our own lobbyist? If that takes our probability from 4% on up, okay, that's something we've got to look at strategically, is how much money we want to put after this, and what's the best use of that. The county has come back, and I talked about this two years ago, they're willing to work with us on legislation, both at state level and the federal level. I've got the commitment, the chairman, that, hey, when you guys need something, come work with us. We haven't done that, we need to do that. And then I think the big thing in this thing is, we're putting together this plan, we're spending money, but I think if we went out to you, the citizens, and said, "If we double this budget for lobbying, we'd go from 4% to 70%," I don't think that would be an issue at all for the town. So the whole thing in this is, this is the kind of planning that we need to do, strategic planning, okay? In terms of what resources we want to use, and also to be open about what we can do, what we can't do. That's it.
Go ahead, Larry.
So one of the things that we've done is really done a great job this year in putting our budget together. And our outside accounting firm did a beautiful job in that budget book and presentation. So I give them a lot of creds for doing, and Deborah did a great job putting the budget together. But we do need to look forward to doing what I call, and those of you that have been around probably know, is getting some smart goals together that are strategic, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time-bound, and tying those, you know, all the way from the staff to our managers, to the town manager, to the board, and then up to Onslow County, so that we can be in alignment and have transparency of what our goals are. But then also, when you build a budget, and we're doing it one-off by years, we're not necessarily looking as forward as we could be in forecasting needs down the road, so that we can start doing what we do in public sector, which is encumbering funds for things that we're going to need two, three, and four years out. So the idea of maybe having a separate goal-setting meeting for this year's approved budget would be a good thing for us to do, so that we're in alignment, and when we do meet with other towns in the county, we have something as well on paper, what our strategic goals are, and how it aligns with the county.
Can I just, just real quick? This is first impression, okay? This started out as a discussion about, everybody else has got a strategic plan but us. This is not a one, as you know, Lauren, it's not a one month. This is going to take months. And if, when I talked to Holly Ridge, the county, and everything else, this is not, you've been through these, this is not something that happens in a month. It's just critical, before you do another budget, that we have this in place.
So the, I just wanted to add a couple of things, just to give a little bit of a background to this as well. So I don't know how many years ago it was, when I believe it was Alderman Benson and Alderman Grant that pushed for the capital improvements fund. And that is why we were able to get the fire station move-in and start planning for other things. So a lot of the items that you mentioned here, we have them tied to that fund, but we don't have them planned, as you would say. So, and we did talk about doing a planning meeting at this last budget, but there's just been so much on our plate as a town to get done over the past four to eight years. I would say we're there now, where we've gotten over the hump, and we have funds, right? But, I mean, we've got the capital improvement fund, it took us forever to get Town Hall back after Hurricane Florence, that's back. Phase five is done, phase four is done, we've got the BISAC team now trying to plan the rest of it. The fire station is being built, someday it will be done. The old fire station, though, was also rehabbed, it looks great, and we've had a lot of staffing challenges that we're getting over that hump as well. So we are in a good place now to be able to support a planning effort for both strategic and tactical, and be able to tie it to the budget. Now, of course, that means, you know, I'm not accepting any hurricanes this year, but that's...
That's not in the plan.
That's not in the plan. It's not in the plan. So I agree with what the thoughts are moving forward, I just wanted to give a little backstory as to why we're where we're at right now.
Do you guys have anything else you want to add? Okay.
Years ago, back in January, February timeframe, we would have a board workshop, where we would, we would conduct these types, we would have these types of discussions and establish That's when this should happen, particularly given it's an election year. We're going to have new faces on this board that will be sworn in at the December meeting. So January or February is the ideal time to do that. I think that the timing of these comments, and the timing of this presentation, are very interesting, given that we have an election this year. And I'll just leave it at that. Sorry to keep you awake there, Mr. Barefoot.
Go ahead.
I'm not even going to comment on the Cobra issue at this point. I have a Cobra report that I plan to give as part of my alderman's report later in this meeting.
Yes, sir. No, sorry.
So Tom, I appreciate that we had set priorities before in that timeframe, but in looking at doing strategic planning, priorities come out of a strategic plan. So to start the conversation about a strategic plan, and to start maybe having some separate strategic planning meetings, separate from the board meetings, where the public's involved, I think that's an, should be an ongoing process, because anybody that's worked with strategic plans know that over time, it's a living document, and it takes updating as you accomplish things. So setting priorities is one thing before a budget, but starting the strategic planning process, I think we can start at any point.
But I also, but we cannot lose, we cannot lose sight of how important a tactical plan is with the strategic plan. You can't have one without the other, and the budget is not a tactical plan.
Right. And I think the issue was mostly to get input from out here, which should be ongoing.
Sure.
And that's, that's the start of the process, okay? This isn't here, this is here. You know, this comes from you all. What are your priorities? Because we get mixed messages, I do, from people about what's important. And so this thing starts, and it should be every day, but we should really start saying, you know, send stuff in, let us know what's important to you, and then we can figure out what we can do.
Yes, sir. Did you want to say something?
Again, though, and I agree with what you said, Laura, but when we get down to the planning aspect of it, and particularly with the board, we can't lose sight of the fact that, come the first of the year, we're going to have new faces on this, on this board. And those are the folks who are going to have to, going to have to really do this, and have to, I mean, we can solicit input now, and I think that we, ongoing, as an ongoing function of being board members, we listen to our constituents, and we hear what they say. But, you know, until, until we have, till we have a new board seated, our ability to really push forward on this, still unlimited.
Well, we'll have another open forum, Jeff, and you'll be able to speak. Go ahead.
So, Tom, to that point, I don't think, I think the strategic plan and the planning process is irrelevant of who's sitting here in that. It's a living document that will supersede who's ever up here. The document gets created, and it gives everybody in the town and the public a way to see where the town's moving. One of us comes or goes, or three of us, the document starts to get created. This is a long process to get a strategic plan in place, and so even getting us all educated, maybe having someone come from Onslow County, or one of the other towns that has done a strategic plan, even to give a presentation to us, doesn't have to wait for an election. I think we can start getting educated on how to do a strategic plan, so that people who haven't participated in creating one can get the exposure, and we can do some learning from people in the local county that have already put their plan together. So having a presentation, getting a foundation of knowledge, so that then the board and people could move forward with deciding, what is our plan even going to look like? What elements are we going to have in a strategic plan? Those things can, those things are not, are not tied directly to a budget, they are tied around focus areas, out of which will come priorities in each of the subsequent year's budgets.
And I apologize, I had a senior moment. Tim Foster, the chairman of the commission, is willing to come talk to us about their strategic plan, the process they went through. He's committed to come visit with us. We can probably get him in September to come in, and that would be the kickoff on this thing. And apologies, because I talked to him about their plan, and he is more than willing to come talk to us, lay out what they did, the process, everything else. And actually, I think we should push him for what else we can get from the county, because I do it every meeting with those guys. But I think that would be, and I apologize, Mayor, that was part of my presentation that, I keep calling him Tim, the chairman, is committed to come.
Okay. Can I just? Yes, please. Can I just add, typically, the approach to a strategic plan process is for the board to plan a retreat-type meeting. And where we do not, I do not have other towns coming to give you advice on how to do a strategic plan process. It's usually a moderator, the attorney's usually involved sometimes. Also, the League of Governments is good at coming in and moderating these type of things to help you to determine where you want to go, to create what your vision is, and determine where you want to go. That's typically the first step of a strategic plan endeavor.
I'm sorry, 100% with you. All he was going to talk about is why it was important to them. He's not going to tell us what the process should be or anything else. His whole point was, it was a lot of debate, as you know, they spent a lot of time on this, he's just going to give us background on why they thought it was important. He's not going to get involved in the details of our strategic plan.
Yeah, because one of the things I think is very, is very important, Alderman Grant, and you touched on it briefly when you spoke about Holly Ridge, we need to be North Topsail Beach. I do not need to model after Surf City, or Topsail Beach, or I'll even say Onslow County. We are very different. It's a much smaller community, we have different needs and different focus areas. So I do, I do agree with Ms. Darian's comment there, that, I mean, it would be appropriate for the education to come from, from the League and other places like that.
But if you remember, that's the point I made, we've got a lobbyist that we share with three other people.
Yeah. Right. We need to be North Topsail Beach.
The pie is only one pie, and we've got to go after our pie.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item, which is the open forum. Do we have anybody else signed up for the second forum?
I have no signups for the second forum.
Jeff, did you want to come back up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, you like my comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Sam Ferrari, I'm a new resident, haven't even been here a week. I live at 148 Seagull Lane, transitioning from Florida to here permanent. I'm not going to run for any office, I served in public office at the local level for 34 years, 29 is mayor of my former town, and so I did my purgatory, and, but listening for the first time, and I wasn't going to speak at all today, but the strategic plan is one of the most important things a town or city can do. I would encourage you to get involved with, if you have an institute of government at one of your universities, or your League of Towns or Cities, they are a great forum. Our town went through some times where I couldn't get three commissioners to agree on anything, so we did an American Assembly process, which is a national process started by Dwight D. Eisenhower, and it brings a cross-section of the residents together. And we invited our congressman to be part of that, or one of our county commissioners, somebody from the Board of Education, and, you know, select variants of the community. And what was important to that was that we got a good cross-section, and we got a basis, and then the commission formed the plan. But we had a five-year plan that was tied to our five-year capital plan, that allowed us to go for grants. So everything I heard today seems good, and I would be happy to volunteer on committee or a board, but just not in elected position. But I just want to introduce myself. My wife, Donna, and I will be here full-time within the next three weeks. We're back and forth trying to sell our house in Florida, so, thank you.
Welcome. Jeff, did you want to speak as well?
No. No, I have my question.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Jeff Meyer, 2224 New River and Lake Road. Going back to the debate issue, as was mentioned years ago, when we still owned a business, we hosted several debates, or meet and greets, however you want to call them. We even did one for Surf City, which was phenomenal in the events surrounding it. I encourage local businesses to open up their facilities, to have debates, meet and greets. And I would also like to encourage the candidates to hold their own meet and greets. A lot of times, you get more conversation and learn more good and bad about the candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else like to speak? The next item is the attorney's report, yep.
Nothing to report this time, Madam Mayor.
Nothing to report this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. And from the mayor's report, I just want to welcome our new hires and I think that you will love it here. So you're still here anyway and you've, it's been a couple of weeks, so I think we're going down the right path. I would like everybody to please keep an eye on the weather because it does look like we're starting to get into the active season and just be prepared for anything that may come our way. I also want to express my thoughts and prayers for Connie and her family as they continue through their health journal. I think that's it for me. And I'll start with Alderman Benson.
Thanks, Mayor. Sure, our thoughts really go out to Connie, Liddle and her family. Other than that, I don't really have any new information to report.
Mayor Proton?
Sure. Thank you. First of all, welcome to the new hires. It's always good to have another Marine on board. Right, Larry? Okay. Want to thank everybody involved in the Jazz Festival over the July 4th weekend. Outstanding. It was great. It always is. It's fun. Like to see more people there, just, but town staff and folks down in Ocean City did a, did a tremendous job. I'd like to, let's see here, like to wish United States Coast Guard a happy 235th birthday celebrated on August the 4th. And now I'm going to give a Cobra update despite what we've already heard. In terms of the doom and gloom, we have two pending bills, Senate 1724 and House Resolution 1885. Last Tuesday, July 29th, I had a Zoom meeting with our federal lobbyists. I requested the meeting out of concern that things don't seem to be moving along. They've came, seemed to have come to a bit of a standstill. Some of this is understandable and to a large extent unavoidable, given recent activities at the federal level with the budget. But I wanted them to know that I wasn't happy about it and we needed to keep the progress on these bills moving forward. I phrase my comments from the standpoint of what we should be looking to do when both chambers come back from recess after Labor Day. Again, I was reminded we're in a, in a good position, best position we've ever been. I always hear this, we've never been this far this early in a session, which is actually true. I was reminded of how while we were visiting with the Shore, with the Shoreline Protection Commission up in March, the subcommittee at that point scheduled our hearing for a date in May that was just three weeks away from when we were up there. As far as the House and Senate, we'll go, the first priority will be the passage of a budget. It'll either be passed or there will be a continuing resolution. There's a pecking order about what kinds of bills get done when up there and obviously things at the federal level and money and all that, they're first. And then, and then as they have time is when they get to the local stuff. And that's why, that's why since we're a local bill, that's why things happen the way they do. What happened in '23 was frankly, we ran out of time. And as you all remember in '23, at about the time I was up there testifying, it was about the same time, things were, were coming to a standstill at the federal level on other issues. And the session ended before the bill could get, could get to the House floor. Once the budget's taken care of, we can expect for a vote on our House bill out of the subcommittee to the full committee. Once it gets out of there, there'll be a markup schedule created for the bill to be marked up at the, at the full committee level, looking at probably September, October timeframe for the bill to get moved from the subcommittee to the full committee, Natural Resources Committee. After that, there'll be discussions regarding packaging, whether it will go to the House floor as a standalone bill or whether with other Natural Resources Committee bills or if it will be simply attached to another bill somewhere. What is going on right now? Although the congressmen and senators are out of town, their staff members are still working. Okay? While some of them may use this opportunity to take vacations, they're by and large still at work. And really without the Congress in session, there's probably a lot more work that gets done at the staff level than, than when they're running around trying to get people for votes and stuff. Our lobbyists are working with respective staff members right now to keep our bills on everyone's collective radar so they will continue to move forward once the two chambers One of our lobbyists is preparing a set of letters for us to hang on our webpage that will allow our property owners to easily write to the congressmen and senators regarding their interest in the passage of these bills. Keeping in mind that we have property owners from literally every state in the country here in North Topsail Beach, we're going to try to target those representatives who are serving on the committees that can most affect and assist with the passage of these bills. These are the Senate Committee on Environment and Public Works and the House Committee on Natural Resources. So to sum it up, I'm engaged and I work weekly with our lobbyists and touch base with our, our, our staffs in Washington. And that concludes my brief.
Alderman Olszewski?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out today and those of you that are watching on Zoom. I want to let you know there's still health department issues in that I've recently had COVID and so has someone else here, sitting up here. So please be, please be aware that it's still out there. Also, please keep filling in the holes so that we don't have people falling in and breaking a leg. This is an election year and as Fred and I know, one or two votes make a difference. And so for our new residents, please register with Onslow County Board of Elections. And, you know, although we have lots of people here, the number of registered voters at last count was like in the 400s who are actually full-time residents registered to vote. So we need to get that number up, especially for people that have moved here and haven't registered. So please take care of that in Jacksonville with Onslow County Board of Elections. Also, having needed to call the non-emergency number last night myself, once again, if you need to call our police department late, early morning hours, the non-emergency phone number is 910-455-9119. So they are responsive and if you need that, you know, we had people in our pool at 2:30 in the morning that didn't need to be there and I needed to call. But please feel free to, you know, use the services of our police chief, our fire folks. They are here to help keep us safe and sound. And I want to thank you all for your efforts in the last couple of months because I know the summer is a busy season. So thank you.
Alderman Grant?
I would echo. I had to go out on a trip for a while. I always feel my house is safe here, so thank you. As you know, I go to, I'm the interface with the county commissioners. We go to, we go to the meetings every week. It's very interesting. We've talked about growth and things here. Biggest issue that comes before the commissioners right now is rezoning. A lot of growth, a lot of building, you see it. Also return, you'll love this one, employee retention and public safety is a big issue. They've talked about the firehouses down there. I think it's $6 million they just kicked for, is it Bear Creek? I have to go look at that. They're very concerned about that. Keeping in mind, you know, as, as I spent the last couple of years there, we now get a fire tax. It's about three cents and about half a million bucks a year that comes in. It's based upon our tax base. We're also going to get $150,000 sent in this year in beach funds. But the breakthrough in this, and, and to be honest with you, I was rude and my wife elbowed me when, when the county manager was talking about their budget and how important the beaches were. I was sitting behind him and so I apparently loudly said North Topsail Beach. And so they were teasing us. They've actually committed $1.5 billion in their budget this year to rework their beach accesses and all that kind of stuff. Now, we can say that's their property, but it's our beach. And the fact that they're now focusing on doing things here, we have a very good relationship with them. They're willing to help us with stuff like that. But as you know, Allison, the past, getting money from them has not been an easy thing. And so I think they're willing to work with this. They have a very tight budget. This one is not quite so good. I'm on the UNWASAB board and we had, I think, and Allison and I talked about it, we had a sewer issue and a leak issue down in Ocean City within the last two weeks, maybe? I think it was. And actually backed up, the sewer backed up into this individual's house. And so I sat down and talked to her, talked to Frankie and Matt, the CEO and CEO. There's a lot of old pipe. There's a lot of old things. And since they've taken over the Pluris stuff, they really don't have a good handle on what needs to be done. The good news on this one is that work down in Ocean City is now one of their highest priorities. They're going to do a temporary solution, but they're also going to have to replace, I think, like 25 or 30 valves and stuff down there. So it's a very high thing. I had no idea how old the system was. And then that Frankie said too, I'm not going to tell you her name, was I've been pushing on the UNWASAB board for the last two years to set aside money in their budget to replace old pipe. And so I think that's something, you know, if you've got feedback on that, but I think we really need to be taking a look at the infrastructure we have in this town because the pipes are that old. And thank you for coming. Really pleased, nice to see three people run, very strong candidates. Jeff, I look forward to, after you talked about your experience up in DC, to get some real feedback, although I understand your wife has got more stroke than anybody up there, so. Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, I really, I know, I lived, I lived that life. Anyway, thank you for coming. I appreciate your comments on the strategic plan. You were looking at me like that's two and two is four, right? You know, it's a basic thing you have to have and you lived with it for a number of years. So thank you for coming.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss NC General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, number three, to consult with our attorney.
And Madam Mayor, because we will be discussing pending litigations, the statute requires that I list out the parties to that litigation.
Okay.
One of them is, quite a, quite a long list, so please bear with me.
Okay.
So the parties, CM Mitchell Construction Company, the town of North Topsail Beach, and then Pacific Southwest Ventures LLC, Wellmans Construction Incorporated, Cancelini Investments LLC, Daniel Rupert II, Jacob Rupert, Phyllis Umbar, Umbarger, Christopher Mannan, Hannah Bannon, Michael Landis, Marshall Landis, Mr. Patel, who I won't be able to, Ms. Patel, Patel, Thomas Douglas, Loretta Douglas, Elman Curtis, Anders, Topsail Reef Homeowners Association Incorporated, town of North Topsail Beach, and Carrigan Family Foundation Limited.
Not to be rude, was, is that every one of those is an individual lawsuit?
No. These are all parties to a lawsuit.
Okay. I was like, I was having a heart attack.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? No, we don't even have a motion.
I, I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Now I need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trey, you threw me off there. Trey, you threw me off there.
So, I just want to report that we've come out of closed session and no action was taken in closed session. And I want to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.